There we go. Standing recording. And so yeah, so we're good to go. So yeah, so um we'll start over here. Let me figure out exactly what was the last time we finished last time? I think I think we did twenty or maybe we just did fifteen. Forget. Let's see, let's take the twenty. Looks like fifteen. Oh, no, no, twenty was that one with the cart, which was weird. Yes, okay, we've we did twenty. So then all we have left is twenty six and thirty five from this chapter and then chapter nine. So let's start with twenty six. So twenty six is this question, is it two parts? Yes, there's another part up there. So let me just take the screenshot. There's one. And there's the other. And we can get going, so. One part. Another part. Okay. So um oh, no. Too big. So um as shown in this figure, a light string that does not stretch changes from horizontal to vertical as it passes over the edge of a table. The string connects M one, a third, a three point five kilogram block, originally at rest on the horizontal table at height H above the floor to M two, a hanging block, one point nine kilograms, hanging, hanging one point nine kilogram block originally at a distance D is zero point nine meters above the floor. Neither the surface of the table nor its edge exerts a force of kinetic friction. The block starts to move from rest. The sliding block M one is projected horizontally after reaching the edge of the table. Okay, the hanging mass M two stops without bouncing when it strikes the floor. Consider the two blocks plus the earth as the system. Find the speed at which M one leaves the edge of the table. Okay, find the impact speed of M one on the floor. Of M one on the floor. Okay, what is the shortest length of string so that it does not go taut while M one is in flight? Sure, um shortest length of string so it does not go taut while. Oh, it does say succeed, right? Good. Okay, well, because I didn't understand that, so happy to happy to hear that. Um, D is the energy of the system when it is released from rest equal to the energy of the system just before M one strikes the ground? E, Y, or Y, not okay. So let's start, where's my drawing thing? Here. Don't even have it plugged in. So let's start here. I should have my formula sheet out too. Have a periodic table here in front of me too, not gonna need that, but just in case. We have um M one equals, so the mass of M one is um three point five kilograms. Okay, M two is one point nine kilograms. Okay, uh the height of the table, so let's say height of the table is one point two meters. And the original height of block two, it's a bad way to say it, never mind. I was gonna say HO two, but that doesn't make sense. Height original is zero point nine meters. Someone's got a printer going. Yeah, we hear it. I think it's gone now. Neither the surface of the table, yada, yada, sliding block. Okay, we're good. So we know, let's think about this, I guess, in terms of energy, right? So for the first part is asking for, uh, find the speed at which M one leaves the table. Edge of the table, so as as this moves this way, what's the speed as it leaves there? So well, it has, let's think of our delta K, right? So delta K um plus delta U equals the non-conservative work. But there's there's no non-conservative work here. It's all gravity. So delta U is zero, I'm pretty sure, because it's the same, there's no spring and it's at the same height the whole time. So delta U would be zero. That makes sense to me. Then delta K, oh no, hold on, I'm gonna range problems here. So what I'm thinking, okay, so then delta K would just be zero. But that doesn't make sense, because it does speed up. It does speed up, right? So delta K can't be zero. So then I'm not thinking of the whole thing, okay, I'm thinking of the wrong thing. So maybe I'll think of the two blocks together? Okay, so how much potential energy do we have at the start here? So delta K plus we have uh I think we may think of these as two different parts of the system. So delta U of one plus delta U of two. Um, delta U of one is zero, but delta U of two is not zero. Right, because so if we say delta K, um, I guess you can also separate this into delta K. Two different delta Ks. Plus delta U two equals zero. Okay, let's just see what happens. So we know, let's let me bring this down here. So that's K one, uh, oops, final minus K one initial. Uh, we don't know much about K two though, what do we know about K two? So um the block starts to move from rest. Consider the two blocks plus the earth, so consider the two blocks plus the earth as part of the system. Sure. Neither the surface of the ta- uh, that's all, we don't know anything else about, well, I guess we know that M two, the connect, the the K I for two is also zero. What are we looking for though? We're looking for the speed K F. K one F, yeah, okay. So um K two F minus K two I. I think both of these are zero, because it starts at rest and it ends at rest. No, 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 no. But at least it starts at rest. And this one also starts at rest. And so this is going to be delta U two, so here um it's gonna have U F two, uh, oops, minus minus U I two. Doesn't have any final, because it's on the floor. And this equals zero. So one half M V F squared for one. So I'm kind of in a tricky situation now, because I have V F two squared as well. Minus M G H original equals zero. So I'm looking for that speed, but I have two unknowns here. Um, okay, yeah. Let's see, see if that works, that makes sense. Uh, the reason I didn't think that is, yeah, someone's gonna say something. Not necessar- it doesn't say that, right? It doesn't, so what is the shortest length of the, oh, no, well, part C is asking what's the short, maybe we can assume that? Can we assume that, I guess? Okay, I think that might be better than saying this has no final velocity, yeah, because this does have a final velocity. Assuming it didn't hit the ground, of course, what would it be? Okay, let's, let's, let's say they have the same velocity, see if we get the right answer. So let's just say they have the same velocity. Um, well, I can solve this now, I'm pretty sure, yeah, I guess, looks like I can. Guess I can cancel an M. Um, and just multiply everything by two. So V F squared plus V F squared minus two G H equals zero. So divide everything by two, I guess, so V F squared equals G H. This doesn't quite look right. This is, I have a feeling this is not gonna give us the right answer, where's my calculator? Oh, you're right, you're right, yeah, you're right, you're right. Yeah. Yeah? Oh, the kinematic way? Okay, well, let's okay, let's see if I can figure this out, but yeah, if not, then we'll do that. So this is just to make sure this is M one, this is M two, this is M two. Okay, yeah, so now I can just say, still multiply everything by two. So M one V F two plus M two V F squared, I mean. Uh, minus two M two G H uh equals zero. So V F squared times M one plus M two equals M two G H naught. So V F equals M two G H naught over M one plus M two squared. See if that is anything. Square root of, so M two. Uh, yeah, yeah, what did happen to it? I don't know, yeah. Why did I, why did I not write it here? Yeah, I have no idea, yeah. Yeah, I don't really, okay, well, that's, yeah, there should be a two there, okay. Uh, so two times, I don't know the masses, M two was one point nine times nine point eight one times the initial high was uh zero point nine. Then M one, so one point nine plus three point five. So I got two point five. Is that the answer? But I have a feeling no. Uh, let's see, is the answer here? Twenty six, yeah, that is the answer. There you go. All right. That worked out. They got, they got the answer there. I did not expect that, but yeah, that's, so that's how you do that. Yeah, for sure. Especially I'm happy to go over it now, and that I know it's right, so yeah, of course. So, okay, label our, label our things at the start. We start with our equation, delta K plus delta U equals zero. Right, I separated the delta K and the delta U into two pieces. One for the delta, for the, for the M one and one for the M two. Right, because we're considering two blocks plus the, I didn't really use the earth, I guess, but two blocks as part of the system. So that the kinetic energy of the system is the two kinetic energies combined, same with the potential energy. So um I took out the U, delta U one, because there's no change in potential energy for, for U one, for a block one. So it's just delta U two. And then here, um, I just split this into delta K one plus delta K two. So then down here, this is, of course, this is delta K one. This is delta K two. And this is delta U two. And then I just took out the things that are zero, right? So in delta K one, the initial kinetic energy of block one is zero, it's not moving. In delta K two, the initial kinetic energy of block two is is also zero, right? And then in delta U two, well, the final potential energy of block two is zero, because it hits the floor. So then I just took the things that are relevant, so I took that, became that. That became that. And that became that. And then just solved for V F. And I got two point five. Did some rearranging, but yeah. Yeah, because they're connected by a string. They're connected by a string. Yeah, 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 no problem, no problem. I di- I didn't assume that at first, and then, but then someone said that, and I was like, oh, okay, that makes sense, yeah. So um, okay, so find the speed, uh, we've, we found the speed, uh, find the impact speed of M one on the floor. So uh, impact speed of M one on the floor. Would it not also be two point five? Is it not? No, it's not. Impacts, oh, of M one on the floor, sorry. Of M one, sorry, I was thinking M two, okay. Impact speed of M one on the floor. So let's just, I think maybe it would be good to just treat it like this. So we'll have a, we have the table. The block is now on off the edge, it's moving. It's moving at two point five meters per second. And we want to know how fast does it hit the floor, right? We know that this distance is one point two meters, I think we know that. One point two meters, yeah. So let's just do our delta K. Delta K plus delta U equals zero. So K I minus, oops, K F minus K I plus U, oops, I can't write. You, yes, it is, it is, yeah. So U F is zero and everything else we don't have, I mean, we have everything else we need. So oh, is someone asking a question? No, maybe, okay. I guess not, okay. So one half M V F squared minus one half M V I squared minus M G H equals zero. So just solve for V F. So M V F squared minus M V I squared minus two M G H equals zero. So then it's just gonna be M V F squared equals two M G H my, uh, plus M V I squared. Uh, no, not equal zero, already probably moved it over. Uh, now we can cancel the masses. Because it's just the one mass. And we're good. Oh, and it's the square root, and that's it. So V F equals two G H plus V I squared. Square root. So the square root of two times nine point eight one times one point two plus V I squared. So V I was two point five, that's what we calculated in the last, well, I'll do two point four nine, just because that's the actual number. And then so finally, we know V F equals five point forty five meters per second. Which is the answer. If I remember correctly, yes. Okay. So any questions about that? This is part, this is part B. Okay, um, then, oh, oops, wrong tab here. So we did B, so we don't do C. D is, is the energy of the system when it's released from rest equal to the energy of the system just before M one strikes the ground? Okay. When's release from rest? Well, what's the energy of system when it's released from rest? It has potential energy, I mean, it just has potential energy. At the end, it has potential energy, I mean, uh, no, at the end, it has no potential energy, all kinetic energy. Right, all of the potential energy that was stored in here was turned into kinetic energy of M one flying off. Was energy lost anywhere? No friction? Um, yeah, here, because it doesn't bounce. Isn't that, maybe that's what it is, because it's a inelastic. Yeah, that's true. Uh, how would that lose energy? Well yeah, but where would that be, where would that be taking energy from? I guess it would be taking energy from yeah? Yeah, 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 okay. I say, well, here it says the sliding, um, the hanging block M two stops without bouncing when it strikes the floor. So if it doesn't bounce, then that kinetic energy is not conserved there, because it's a non, that's an inelastic. And and I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly, inelastic is the one where it's just momentum's conserved, but no potential energy. So then, since then, that that seems like to me like it's not gonna, that's gonna do something. Let's see what the answer is. Um, not exactly, because some energy will be transformed to sound waves when M two hits the floor. Okay, great. There you go. We did, there you go, good job. So yeah, and that's, that's that question. Uh, and then the last one from this chapter, number thirty five is here, yes. Um it's this one here. Okay. Okay, guys. Okay, and it, probably in just a few minutes, I have to take like a few minute break. I know it's already like, it's, we pretty much just started, but I think in a few minutes, just because I gotta help someone with something quickly. Okay, and then I'll be back after that for the rest of the time. Okay, so I'll let you know. So I'll just start this question, and then we'll probably finish it after I'm I'm back, okay? So a horizontal spring attached to a wall has a force constant of eight hundred fifty newtons per meter. A block of mass one is attached to the spring and rests on a frictionless horizontal surface as in this picture. The block is, oh, A, the block is pulled to a position X I, which is right there, right? Um uh, which is six centimeters from where? From here, I guess from there? Yeah, or no? Where is that measured from? I guess from there, yeah, never mind, if that's X equals zero, then that's where, that's where it's measured from. Um, find the elastic potential energy stored in the spring when the block is six centimeters from equilibrium and when the block passes through equilibrium. Okay, find the speed of the block when it passes through the equilibrium point. What is the speed of the block when it's at a position X I over two, right there, I guess, which is three centimeters? Why isn't the answer the part C half the answer of part B? Well that one's, that one's gonna be, the part D one is gonna be probably, because it's X squared. But yeah, exactly. Okay, guys, so it's all right, now is the time that I have to help someone quickly. So I'll be back in just a few minutes, okay, maybe, maybe five minutes, okay? And then I'll, I'll be, uh, so maybe think about this question while I'm gone. Okay, so I'll say, I'll say, I'll say five minutes on the, on the timer here, go AFK. Properties, back at, not eight oh five, back at, I'll say six forty six. Okay, so back in just a little bit, sorry about that. Can you hear me? Can you hear everybody? That's such a, that's such a, that's such an online school thing to say, can you hear me? Was my mic on? Okay, um, so uh, where are we? This one. Okay, I'm here. Fix my hair a little bit, there you go. Uh, yeah, white discord. That's how I roll, that's how I roll. Um, okay, so this one, a horizontal spring attached to a mass has a force constant of that. So I'm gonna start writing down the things instead of just reading it over again. So three, uh, eight hundred and fifty. So our K value is eight hundred and fifty newtons per meter. Uh, M is one kilogram. Okay, uh, so our, I assume that means X I, block is pulled to a position X I is six meters, oh, from equilibrium. So six centimeters from equilibrium. So I'll say delta X equals zero point zero zero, oh, one too many zeros, zero point zero six meters. Uh, well, I should say I. Find the elastic potential energy at that point. And I don't know what those, I didn't really understand, and when the block passes through equilibrium, it's just zero? That's the elastic potential energy when it passes through equilibrium? I think so. Find this, I think so. Okay, well, uh, this one, part A is not too difficult, like, there's just a, there's just a formula for it, isn't there? It's just that the potential energy of the spring is equal to one half K X squared, delta X squared. Right, so one half times eight hundred and fifty times zero point zero six squared. I'm pretty sure it'll just be this. Zero point zero six squared. Um, one point fifty three joules? Joules, okay. Um here, I'll, I'll open up the uh answers. Here, I'll open up the answers to, do you have the answers for thirty five? No, I don't have the answers, at least not on the page. Maybe if someone could open up the answers for this, this one. Just make sure. It's right? Okay, thank you, thank you. Um. So, and then it's zero going through the equilibrium, so that's that's that. B is find the speed of the block as it passes through the equilibrium point. Well, at that point, all the, all the, this potential energy of the spring. Has been converted into kinetic energy, because if it, if here, it has po- potential of zero, right? Potential energy of zero. So the only pla- only place for that it could have gone, assume, sorry, assuming frictionless and all that stuff. Is that it could have gone into the kinetic energy of the block, right? So we can just say one point five three equals one half mv squared. Right? And then we can solve for v. Right, so two times one point five. Three point oh six. Did not need the calculator for that one, v squared. So v equals three point oh six over, what was the mass, one? Square root. Root answer is, um, the velocity is one point seven five meters per second. There you go. And. Then here, okay, so parts, part C is what is the speed of the block when it's at the position xi over two? So let's, let's think of it there. So C, let's, we're gonna have to use our delta k plus delta u equals zero in this case, right? So, uh, I'll break this up into, so kF minus ki plus uf minus ui. Equals zero. So let's think about the initial positions. Initially, it has zero kinetic energy. It's pulled all the way back. Right? Finally, it, so the final position is is this now for part C, right? It's where it's in this dotted line at half, half xi, right? So at three centimeters. It does have potential energy, uh, it does have potential energy, and it also still has potential energy at the end. Right? So, uh, kF squared, so it's one half mvF squared. Plus, um, so the final potential energy is the potential energy of the block in this position right here, right? Which is gonna be one half k and then delta x is zero point zero three centimeters squared. Cause at that point, delta x is zero point zero three centimeters. Minus one half k and then zero point zero six centimeters, right? Oh, sorry, not centimeters, they're meters. So this is three, this is three centimeters, here at six centimeters. We know that equals zero. So we can just solve for, um, we can just solve for v here. So multiply everything by two. So mvF squared plus k zero point zero three squared minus k. That's not a k, but I'll just go with it. Zero point zero six squared equals zero. Okay, so, uh, vf equals k zero point zero six squared minus k. Zero point zero three squared. All over m, square root. Do we know m? Hope we do. Is one kilogram, so just over one. So vf is gonna be this. So, uh, square root of, uh, eight hundred and fifty, so k is eight fifty. Yeah, eight fifty times zero point zero six squared. Minus. Eight fifty times zero point zero three squared. And I got my answer to be one point five one. Does that make sense? Uh, yes, that does make sense, meters per second. And James, is that, is that a correct? Yes. Okay, good, great. I'm happy to. Um. So yeah, and so notice it's part C asks, why isn't the answer to part C half the answer to part B? Even though it's halfway through it, it's because of that squared term, so it's not, it's not, uh, linearly related. Uh, where's the squared? Like the u, the potential energy is one half k x squared. So it's not linearly proportional, that's the word. Yeah. Okay, so that's everything for potential energy. Um, next, we're on to, uh, everything for potential energy or for conservation of energy and potential energy and all that. So next, we're on to momentum and its conservation and center of mass. Actually, we don't even have to do all these questions from chapter nine. Just all the ones up to center of mass, after center of mass, that's not on the test, so we won't do that. It's most, most of them are what? Okay. Okay, well, so anyways, saves us from doing four, so that's that's something. So. Uh, let's take a look here. We're going to chapter nine. Yeah, close this. So linear momentum and collisions, problems, close. With, okay. So starting with question number three here. So. Let's see this. Okay, I'll say chapter nine. Nine. So, a baseball approaches home plate at a speed of forty five meters per second, moving horizontally just before being hit by a bat. The batter hits a pop-up such that after hitting the bat, the baseball is moving up at. Hits a pop-up? Oh, I guess it just goes straight up, okay. Uh, moving at fifty five meters per second straight up. The ball has a mass of bat, demnograms. And is in contact with the bat for two milliseconds. What is the average net force the ball exerts on the bat during their interaction? Okay, so this will be, uh, seems to me like it will be an impulse question, right? So, uh, F, the net force, the average force, times delta t equals the change in momentum. That's an important equation. So. In other words, the net force is equal to the change in momentum over the change in time. Right, which is, which is actually what F equals ma is, right? DP over dt. So, average force is, uh, the final, uh, momentum minus the initial momentum over. I'll just call it delta t, or just call it t, because we have two seconds. Right? So what's the final momentum? The final momentum is, um, I'll probably use hats, like i-hats and stuff like that. So the final momentum is fifty five. Uh, j hat. Yeah, fifty five j hat. J hat. Well, fifty five meters per second, but. Oh, no, that's not correct. Fifty five meters per second times, uh, times the mass. So the mass was, uh, zero point one four five. So I'll just say m times that, minus m times the initial, which we'll just call that. Um, we'll say that's also positive, the hat, the i hat, so that's forty five. I had. Over, uh, I'll just call it t still, but two milliseconds. Um, okay, so, well, we can just do this. So this is going to be m over. M over t. Uh, times fifty five j hat minus m over t times forty five i hat. And that should be our net force. So the mass was zero point. One four five. Zero point one four five over two thousandths of a second, so two over one thousand. Um, hmm, uh, okay, so that's, oh, times, times fifty five. So this is, ooh. Okay, Newtons, so three hun- uh, what I, what I got was three thousand nine hundred and eighty seven point five. Newtons. J hat. Yep. Minus, and then I'll do this one here too, so one forty five, same thing over tip, but times forty five. Minus three thousand two hundred and sixty two point five i hat. So the final answer for me would be nine, a negative three thousand two hundred and sixty two point five. I hat plus three thousand nine hundred and eighty seven point five j hat. Newtons. Is that correct, though? Signs are switched? Um. Why? I don't. Oh. Um, how? What is the average force the ball exerts on the bat during their interaction? Oh, I guess that does make sense, because this is the net force applied onto the thing. So this. It's what's changing the momentum, right? So the thing that's being changed of momentum is not the thing that's applying the force, right? So. But how would I know to switch that? I wouldn't switch that. This seemed like a final answer to me, so. But how would I, how would I know this isn't? Hmm. Uh. Okay, sure, yeah, yeah, that that sounds right. That sounds right. So then, our thing will be the opposite. So just flip it around, three, two, six, two point five, i hat, minus three thousand nine hundred and eighty seven point five j hat. In terms of Newtons. Okay. So number four is next. Number four is here. Yeah. For sure. So, um, I used this equation, right? This was the equation, so this is the force. Uh, uh, what's the exact force? Doesn't even say. Force, um, on what? Let me just make it right. That's the force of the bat on the ball, right? The average force being applied to the thing is the force of bat. Bat on ball, right? Um, times delta t equals the change in, change in momentum. This is just, this is an equation we know, right? So I rearranged this for the force of the bat on the ball, right? Because that's what's changing the momentum of the ball. Right? So then I, uh, plugged in here, so pf is the final momentum. So if we look here. Uh, the baseball is, uh, at the end, the baseball is moving straight up at fifty five meters per second, so it's m, so remember, uh. Momentum is equal to m times v, right? So m times the velocity, well, the velocity is fifty five j hat. Right, fifty five going straight up, minus the initial, which is said it was going forty five horizontally, moving horizontally. So we'll just assume it's going in the positive x direction, so m times forty five i hat. And then I just moved, I just moved the the fractions in the front. I turned m over t, m over t, m over t again. Right? Subtract those, subtracted them, did, did this multiplication, did this multiplication. Ended up with this. And then just combine them, and then flip them, because this is the, this is equal to the force of the, uh, bat. On the ball, but it was asking for the force of the ball on the bat. Which, from Newton's third law, I think, I think that's the one, is that it's just gonna be equal and opposite. So equal magnitude, just opposite direction, so flip the signs. No, I did it in kilograms. I did it in kilograms. Uh. Because I did, well, did I? Let's see. Yeah, yeah, I I put zero point one four five grams, uh, kilograms, zero point one four five kilograms. In the ca- in the calculator. If you, if you put in kilograms. Uh, are you, what are you putting in the denominator? It's two, two milliseconds. Two millisecond. Yeah, yeah, there you go. No problem, no problem. It's zero, well, I just put two over a thousand. I don't know what the decimal is. Two divided by a thousand. Zero point zero zero two, yeah. Good, exactly. Okay, so there's. Yeah. Well. Yeah, that wouldn't be good. That wouldn't be good. Yeah, well, that's fair enough, fair enough, yeah. If you don't know any other context, like, like you don't know what's going on in the question, then yeah, then that's possible. Yeah. Okay, so let's look at this next one. So a sixty five kilogram boy and a forty kilogram, uh, sister. Both wearing rollerblades face each other at a rest. The girl pushes the boy hard, sending him backwards with a velocity. Uh, equal to that, towards the west. Ignore friction. Describe the subsequent motion of the girl. How much potential energy of the girl's body is converted into chemical energy of the boy-girl system? Is the momentum of the boy-girl system conserved in the pushing apart process? If so, explain how that is possible, considering. D, there are a large number of forces acting, and E, there is no motion beforehand, and plenty of motion afterwards. Okay, so, um, let's draw it, I guess. So here's the boy, okay? He is sixty five, he is sixty five kilograms. Okay, here is the girl. She is forty. I'll draw it in a different color. Forty kilograms, okay. Um, then, the. Hmm, the girl pushes the boy, so there's, she's pushing that way, right? At two point nine meters per second, towards the, or pushing, he's going two point nine meters per second now, after the push, right? So ignore friction. Describe the subsequent motion of the girl. Well, she's gonna go the opposite way, because momentum has to be conserved. Right? So she's gonna go the opposite way, um, not necessarily at two point nine meters per second, because their their weights are different. But, yeah. Um, is the momentum of the boy-girl system conserved in the pushing apart process? Yes. Uh, how is that possible, considering there are large forces acting? Uh, there, there are, um. No friction, so I think the answer to that is that there's just conservative forces acting. Is there just conservative forces acting? Yeah. And there is no motion beforehand and plenty of motion afterwards. You don't need, just that, the, the, the value of. Um, the momentum doesn't have to stay the same, right? But it has to be the same, like the same, for the whole system. Has to be the same before and after, at the end and at the beginning. No, it's not. I guess they mean after the, is the momentum of the boy-girl system conserved in the pushing apart process? Um. Is it? Yeah. I guess the energy of the momentum of the system is conserved. Yeah, okay. Yeah, which is the same thing as what we're saying before, okay. Um. Maybe there's a more eloquent answer in the book, maybe if someone has the answer. There's no answer for this one? Oh, let's see, maybe there's, there's one here. Um, no, there's not one here. So it looks like we're just gonna have to go with that. There you go. It doesn't ask to calculate anything, so. Okay, number seven is. For B, let's see. So B is how much potential energy in the girl's body is converted to mech- oh, I didn't do that, okay. So, how much potential energy in the girl's body is converted into mechanical energy of the boy-girl system? Okay, there, I think I need to. Then we need to start calculating things with that, I think. Yeah. Hmm, okay. So. We'll have to see how much potential, how much potential energy in the girl's body is con- so how much energy did she add to the system? Yeah, how much energy did she add to the system by doing that push? I guess that's what we're trying to figure out. So we can find the kinetic energy of both the people and add that together. Might work. So, um, that means we'll have to find the speed of of her after, right? Of of this person after, so, um, we know that. So um, we know that um, delta. Uh, what do we know? We know that. P i equals P F, right, P i equals P F vector. So the initial momentum is zero. So we know that P F, which is um, call this, call this the positive direction, right? Which is um, sixty five. To uh, well, I won't write it like that, sixty five times negative two point nine. I had, right? Uh, plus, yeah, plus forty times V F. I just call it V F for the girl, um, that equals zero. So sixty five times two point nine i hat uh, over forty equals V F for her. So sixty five times two point nine divided by forty, so her final speed is four point seven. Uh, well, but they're being pushed, uh, maybe they're stuck together at at first, but then they're pushed apart. They're pushed, she like pushes on him, yeah. Um. Uh, let's see. The subsequent motion is that she's gonna move that way, this purple arrow, that's, she's gonna move the other direction. At four point seven meters per second, so at first the kinetic energy was zero and now the kinetic energy is one half. Uh, this guy's first, so one half sixty five times two point nine squared plus one half forty times four point seven squared. So that's the, that's how much energy she added. One half times sixty five times two point nine squared. Seems like a lot of energy, but maybe, I don't know how much energy someone usually adds. Uh, four point seven squared. Whoops. So seven hundred and fifteen joules, maybe that's not that much. So it's like this is, this is a different part of it, so seven hundred and fifteen joules, that's how much energy she did from her you know, body, the potential energy stored there, she did that much work. Um, yeah. And we don't have answers for this, so we don't know if that's right. But I, we'll just have, we'll just have to go with it, I guess, unless anyone has anything to say, which of course, if you think I'm wrong, then sure, tell me. Ayy. Um. I feel like we just go with magnitude, yeah, that's true, it would be squared anyways, yeah. You're right, I would, it should be negative, actually. Um, but yeah, but it's. No problem, no problem. Um, okay. Um, so that's number four done now, let's go to number seven. Unless anyone has any questions about that one, did I take a picture of seven already? No. There we go. So seven is, a glider of mass m is free to slide along a horizontal air track. Horizontal air track, okay. It is pushed against a launcher at one end of the track. Model the launcher as a light spring of force constant k compressed by a distance x. The glider is released from rest. Released from rest. A, show that the glider attains a speed of V equals x, k over m squared root of that. Show that the magnitude of the impulse imparted to the glider is given by the expression I equals that, or not k over m, but k times m this time. And is more work done on the cart with a large or small mass? Am I missing a picture or something? Just wanna make sure. Does, doesn't look like it. Okay. So. Glider of mass m. I don't know if I understand what's happening, freedom to slide along a horizontal air track. Okay, so just a track, I guess. It is pushed against a launcher at one end of the track. So like something that extends? Don't really know what a launcher is, what is that, okay. Model the launcher as a light spring of with that force constant uh, compressed by that. So like, so like they're compressing a spring and then it launches them, maybe that's what it is, I guess, so it's it's like they're compressing a spring, okay. The glider is released from rest, show that the glider attains a speed of V is that, okay. So first of all, potential energy isn't changing here. Right, potential energy isn't changing here because it's all horizontal, moving horizontally. Oh, sorry, never mind, potential energy, potential energy is changing because there's a spring. So I'll put this out, plus delta u equals zero. Uh, why is it zero? Cause it doesn't say no friction. But it also doesn't tell us anything about friction. So let's see where we get with this. Well, I don't know what an air track is, I have no idea, but. Oh, okay, okay, I guess, just something with no friction. Okay, okay, yeah, makes sense. So um, let's look here, so this is K F minus K I plus U F minus U I equals zero. So the initial kinetic energy is zero, the final potential energy is zero. So one half mv F, that's a two, not an F, one mv F squared minus, so the potential energy of the spring is one half k x squared equals zero. So let's rearrange for the speed now, so mv F squared equals k x squared. Um, we're not gonna get this. Are we gonna get this? Wait, I lost it, okay. Um, so V F equals the square root of k delta x squared over m. Which. Oh, yes, yes. X times the square root of k over m. There you go. So yes, that is the speed. Um, show that the magnitude of the impulse imparted on the glider is given by the expression that. So the impulse is equal to the change in momentum, right, equal is is equal to delta p. So P F minus P I, okay. So the initial. Uh, the in, huh, okay. The initial momentum is zero because the speed is zero. Right, so the final momentum is just um, m v F, that's it. We know V F is this though, so we can say mx root k over m. And I could probably do something with this um, this thing here, so I can turn this into m over root m x root k, so that's m to the power of one. m to the power of a half, but really negative a half, right, so one minus a half. One. Wait, yeah, one minus a half is a half, so this is just root m. So it's just root m. So then that's just x root km. Is that what we're looking for? X root k. Great. And is more work done on the cart with a large or small mass? So work is. No, I. Um. It's more work done on the cart with a large or a small mass, I guess there would be more force over, so it's force over a distance, is the force, the distance is the same, it doesn't depend on the mass. The force would be more, I guess, because. No, no, I'm putting I have an m there, so the velocity would be less, no, I think it would be the same. Do we, do we have the answer for this one, for number seven? Seven, seven C, what's it? I can't remember. I can't remember now, was it, it was? Wow, I don't, somehow I don't recognize it, but I did do it. The the mass does affect the change in kinetic energy here, it's in the, it's in the final, here. It's still in the kinetic. Uh, yeah, I guess so, yeah, okay, so the network is equal to delta k. So what do we know, we know that um, so we know this is equal to K F minus K I, but so that's not there, so it's just K F. Right, which is equal to um. Well, the final kinetic energy is just equal to, is just well, just equal to the spring, the amount of energy in the spring. Right, because that's, that's kind of, that's kind of what we're saying here. From this equation, K F equals U I, right? K F, K F. Equals U, just move, move this over, move U I over, right? Does that make sense? So yes, so then, no, is that the answer for seven, is it just that they're the same, there's, there's not more work done? Right, because the kinetic, the final kinetic energy is equal to the amount of energy stored in the spring to begin with, right? Not related to the mass. Okay. So that was number seven, let's go to thirteen. Of course, anybody stop me if they have any questions. Um, oh, here, thirteen. Um, there you go. So a railroad car of mass that is moving with the speed of that. It collides and couples with three other coupled railroad cars, each of the same mass as the single car and moving in the same direction with an initial speed of that. What is the speed of the four cars after the collision? What is the increase in mechanical energy in the collision? Uh, yeah. So um, well, this is a perfectly inelastic because it collides, right? So we have to remember that P F equals P I, right? Um, so the um, the final momentum, oh, maybe I'll write this the other way instead of, so not P F, P I equals P F. P F. So the initial momentum is the momentum of the first car. So the first car is um, the mass of the single car. Well, I'll just say m, because they're all the same mass, actually, so m um, times the velocity, which is four. Yeah, uh, plus, now it co- it collides with three other ones, all also m, so three m times two, they're moving at two meters per second. So that equals four m times the final velocity times V F. Yeah, there you go. So we can knock out a m. Okay. Can also knock out a four. And just divide this by two. There. So it's just, well, there you go, that we have the answer, so V F equals three over two. So three over two, which is one point, I don't know, I had to take that in, okay, one point, one point five, one point five meters per second. And hopefully, hopefully. Just divide everything, divide everything by four. But the two cancels here, the two cancels here. They knocked out a two, so it's. Okay, so I made a mistake. Um. Let's. I know, I, I know, I know, but that's, okay, let me, I know, I made like a kind of a weird move there, but four four m plus plus three times two m equals four m times, well, just four m V F. V F, so I can still divide everything by four. Right, because. I made a zero, that's the thing, yes, there you go, that's right. So this is, this, and the, the m cancels. Right? So here, this is one plus, four can be written as two times two. So the two is cancel. So then there's just three halves equals V F. What I missed was this, what I missed was the, the one here, yeah. So, so two, two point five, there you go. She goes two point five meters per second. Okay. Okay, so there's, there's that. What is the decrease in mechanical energy in the collision, okay? So uh, we're just trying to find what delta k is, right, so K, K F minus K I, that's a J. Oops, just left the dot, there, K I equals, so the final kinetic energy is four m times two point five of one half times that squared, never mind. Um. Right, one half four m, yeah, that makes sense. Um, minus the initial, so the initial is going to be one half m four squared plus one half three m two squared. Cause this is the initial speed of the single car and the speed of the three cars combined. Okay, so I can just simplify this a little bit, so two m times two point five squared minus, I can't actually simplify this anymore. I could do. I could do. Uh, what could I do? Eight times sixteen? Uh, there's no reason I should do this, I'll, I'll just leave it like this. Um, so one half m four squared plus one half three m two squared. That's kind of, kind of a waste of time. So two times m was that, so um, two point five times ten to the four minus in brackets, one half times two point five times ten to the four times sixteen minus. Just gonna put more brackets just so it doesn't get confused. Okay. Minus, um, I put one over three by accident, but it's supposed to be one over two, so one over two times two point five times ten to the four, is that what it was, two point five times ten to the four? Ten to the four, um, times four. And I missed the bracket. And I missed a bracket somewhere, oh god. What did I do? Okay, that's good. I got zero. So how did I get zero? I got zero. Is I was supposed to get? Well. Yeah, how did I get zero, what did I? I just typed it in wrong, I guess I just typed in wrong, is that what happened? This is thirteen B. I don't. Um, hold on, does this make sense? What is the decrease in mechanical energy in the collision? Yeah, mechanical energy is potential, and, never mind, yeah, potential and. Yeah. Yeah. Did I just? Did I just type it wrong, yeah, okay, let's. Let me do, let me just, just do it part by part then, so two. Oh, maybe I didn't, well, no, I don't know. Five, so this is thirty one thousand, th- three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. Thirty one thousand, th- three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred minus. One half, oh, oh yeah, no, 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 one half. Times, let me make this better. One half times two point five times ten to the four. And put that in brackets. Times sixteen, four squared is sixteen, I got math error, why'd I get math error? Oh, I just left a thing open, three halves. Times. Two point five times ten to the four. Times four. So I got three, now I got, this is three thousand. Three hundred and fifty thousand, so that minus that, so um. Three, one, two, five hundred, minus the answer, I got negative. Three point, uh, thirty seven point five kilonewtons, or kilojoules. Yeah, is that right? That's the right answer? Okay, there we go, yes, don't know how I got zero before, strange that the calculator gave me an answer of zero. As if it did the calc- not just like I missed a bracket, like, maybe I missed a bracket and somehow that made it all zero. Should be two there, yeah, but I, I don't, I don't think I made them, I noticed that when I was typing in originally, so I don't know if that was, I don't know if that was what it was. Um. Okay, so, next question, so that wa- oh, did I finish the question? Yeah, that was thirteen, so next is seventeen. Seventeen is here. Two parts of course, so a little part here. Um. Where are we? Where am I going? One note. And the other part is. Okay. Okay, so, there, aligned it nicely, I think I did it perfectly, so a tennis ball, oh, not quite, the G is. Where are we? The G is a little cut off here. Perfect, um, a tennis ball of mass fifty seven grams is held just above a basketball of mass five hundred ninety grams. As shown in the figure. With centers vertically aligned, both balls are released. From rest at same time to fall through a distance of one point two meters, find the magnitude of the downward velocity. With which the basketball reaches the ground. Um, okay. Assume that the, that an elastic collision with the ground instantaneously reverses the velocity of the basketball while the tennis ball is still moving down. Next, the two balls meet in an elastic collision, to what height does the tennis ball rebound? Okay, that's a good question. So first of all, find the magnitude of the downward velocity with which the basketball reaches the ground. Not too bad, it's at rest, so the uh, the. Final kinetic energy will just be equal to the initial potential energy. So one half MVF squared will just be equal to MGH. M's cancel. Right, I think so, yeah, so VF squared equals GH two, square root of that. I said it all backwards, but there you go. Square root of two GH, so. Square root of two times nine point eight one times the, the height was one point two meters, so I got four point eighty five. And make sure that's the answer, do I have the answer for this one? Seventeen, no, I don't know the answer to this. It's correct, okay, good, um. So, assume that an elastic collision with the ground instantaneously reverses the velocity of the ball while the tennis ball is still moving down. Next, the two basketballs, the two balls meet in an elastic collision, to what height does the tennis ball rebound? Okay. We don't know how far down the tennis ball fell. But maybe we don't need to know that? Or did it? So, it's a elastic collision, so that means the. Oh, I think it'll be okay, yeah, so that means the. Potential energy and the conservation, so con- conservation of momentum and conservation of, what's it called? Energy, as I said already, okay, momentum and energy, uh, so let's figure out what the speeds are, so the basketball is hitting. The, the basketball is hitting the other ball, I guess I'll call. I guess I'll call that way up, I mean, I'll call that way positive, so the initial velocity of the basketball. Let's call it basketball and that's gonna be tennis ball, is four point five eight, negative four point five eight J add. Um, we don't know the initial. Two balls meet. Okay, to what height does the tennis ball rebound? What we need to do is figure out how much energy is given to the tennis ball after this collision, that's what we need. And from that energy. From that energy. We can do that, yeah. So, um. Before the conni- the collision, we don't know the initial velocity. So if I go here and I say. One half MB. So, the uh, kinetic, the kinetic energy of the, how do I write this? Kinetic, the initial kinetic energy is equal to the final kinetic energy, because it's, it's combined, so the kinetic energy of the basketball is just one half. MVI basketball squared. M of basketball, right, plus one half M of tennis ball. VI tennis ball squared. Equals the final kinetic energy. We don't know lots of these things either, so one half M basketball VI basketball squared. Plus one half M, well. Let's just, let's just call this, let's just call this the final. Uh, this is supposed to be final. The final kinetic energy of the tennis ball. Right, that's what we're looking for. So, we can write the final kinetic energy of the tennis ball as just one half. MBVIB squared plus one half MTVIT squared. Minus one half MBVFB squared. What do we know here? We know the masses. We know the initial velocity of the basketball. We don't know much else. We don't know the initial velocity of the. Should we assume? No, they wouldn't fall. Oh, you're right, you're right. They didn't fall the same, they didn't really fall the same distance, because the radius of the basketball. Right? So we, we also don't know like, so they start like this. They start like that, and, but then after, over, no, no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't separate like that over time, never mind, that doesn't make sense, they wouldn't do that, so they'll stay, they'll stay. Stuck together, but yet, so technically, it, it didn't, the, the tennis ball did not fall the same distance, because it's the radius of the, of the uh. Well, just the radius actually, not the diameter, so drew it wrong. To account for, but I get. Yeah, so it, what I'm just saying by that is that it wouldn't have the same final speed though, because it wouldn't have fallen, the H wouldn't, would be the same. It would be H minus the radius of the basketball. So the velocity would be different. Oh, okay, so we can just call the, okay, okay, that makes sense, yeah, that makes sense. We can call the zero for the basketball the floor and the zero for the um, for the uh, um. Uh, tennis ball, the top of the basketball when it hits the ground. And then we're good, and then it'll be the same, okay, makes sense. So, um, then yeah, so then VIT, well, we know that too. So now we have two unknowns, okay, we can make another equation with the momentum, right, so the momentum is that, is that, is that. PI is gonna be equal to PF. So the M times V, so M uh, basketball times VI basketball. Plus M tennis ball plus VI tennis ball equals. M basketball times VF basketball. Plus M tennis ball times VF tennis ball. Um, I probably can't actually write this, I need to write. Do I, what do I know here? I know the initial velocity of the basketball, initial, I know these two. The fin- I don't know the final velocity of the basketball, but that I can replace here, do I know the final velocity of the tennis ball? No. No, but that'll be in here, so I should actually expand this, so this is the final. One half M tennis ball VF. Tennis ball squared, so there we go. I could actually linear system, I'll multiply this one by two, of course, um. I'll do it now, actually, so M tennis ball VF tennis ball squared. Equals M basketball VI basketball squared plus M tennis ball. VI tennis ball squared minus M basketball VF basketball squared. Okay, um, so. Let's just rearrange this one, I wanna solve for, really, all I actually need is, what do I actually need? I need. The final velocity of the tennis ball, yeah, the final velocity of tennis ball, so let's rearrange for the other one, what's the other one, uh, the final velocity of the basketball. That one. So I'll probably do that here, final velocity of the basketball, that's what I'm targeting, so. Um, that's just MBVIB plus MTVIT. Minus MTVFT. All over MB equals VFB, I can put that into our first equation. And then just solve for VFT. So MT. VFT squared equals MB. VIB squared plus MTVIT squared minus M, uh, well, so the, the MB and the MB will cancel. I, MB and MB will cancel, so it's just gonna be the top of the thing here, so minus. MBVIB plus MTVIT minus MTVFT. Equals, there's an equal sign in there already, okay. So what's the variable we're looking for? VFT, is there any other VFTs here? VFT is right there. Okay, so MT um, minus MTVFT. Equals MBVIB squared, am I missing a squared? No, yes. No, I'm not, never mind. Oh, but this does have to be squared, oops, so then. Does that have to be squared? Yes, so then the Ms don't cancel. Okay. So then there's still a, there's still a. A um, MB here, MB, and there's still the MB in the denominator. How am I supposed to square that? Um, let's see, MTV, oh, I probably should put the numbers in that I know, yes, I'll just put the numbers in that I know, not, not true to those variables. Um. VF squared equal, well. Yeah, MBVIB squared plus MTVIT squared minus. So, um, I'll get rid of the MB now, the top will have numbers, I'll, I'll get rid of that, and then on the bottom it'll still be MB. So let's actually put in the numbers. For the thing on the top that's being squared still, just the top though, so MB times VIB. Um, so the mass of the basketball is zero point five nine. Times the initial velocity, four point eighty five. As a vector, does that matter? I won't put it as a vector because it's being, hmm, yeah, cause they're, all the vectors are being squared, so I think I'll just use it as. Just the magnitude, four point eighty five. Okay. Um, plus the mass of the tennis ball, zero point zero five seven. Uh, zero point zero five seven, yeah, that's right, uh, times VIT, which is also. Four point eighty five. Um, four point eighty five. Uh, here, right, four point eighty five, yeah. Um, minus. Uh, well, I'll just leave that like that for now, so this is, so three point one three seven nine five minus MTVFT. Okay, so I can square that now, it's not too bad to square. Um. VF squared equals MB, oh, too big of a B. MBVIB squared plus MTVIT squared minus, so that's squared. So, that's squared, nine point eight four six seven. Minus, oh, the decimal's gonna get ugly now. Hopefully, okay, well, we'll see, maybe I made a mistake, so let's see, that times that. That times that, so minus three point one three seven nine five MTVFT. Uh. Uh, so, two times that. Plus MT squared VF T squared, there. So MTVF squared equals MBVIB squared. Plus MTVIT squared minus nine point eight four six seven plus. Um, two times three point one three seven nine five. Uh, six point two seven five nine MTVFT. Plus MT squared VFT squared. Oops, all of this, uh, god. This is all over MB. Yeah, that's all over MB. Okay, we're getting closer, so what's our target? V. This should have a T there, shouldn't it? Yeah, it should have a T. So. This is our target. That's our target, so the, both those things are in our target. Hmm, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at, yeah, that's negative. That's should be a positive, yeah, so then that should be a negative, yeah. Yeah. Good, thank you. So now, I will, I guess I'm gonna multiply everything by MB. So it's MBMTVFT squared. Equals MB squared VIB squared plus MBMTVIT squared. Minus nine point eight four six seven plus six point two seven five nine. MTVFT minus M. Oh god, what is that? MT squared VF. T, oh, T should be lower. I swear, I hope I get the, hope I get the answer after this, again, I'm gonna keep highlighting the thing, cause I wanna, I have to see what I'm looking for, uh, this is also part of it. So that's, those are all things we need to know, so I'll move all those terms over, so what's the term? That's a term. Uh, that's a term and that's a term, so all those terms. Uh, that's a term and that's a term. So all those terms go over to the other side. So. M B M T V F T squared. Plus M T squared V F squared. Minus six point five seven five nine M T V F T. Ah, I'm missing the Ts. Can't miss that. Okay, well, actually, I'm moving everything over, really. So it's just going to be. Um, minus M B squared V I B squared. Minus M B M T V I T squared plus nine point eight four six seven equals zero. Okay, so, oh, let me get the phone, hold on. Sorry. Just have to buzz someone. Hopefully, we're good. Sometimes I have to do the buzzer many times, so. I don't know, we'll see. Um. Um. What's our coefficients? Oh, I have to combine these coefficients still, okay. M B M T plus M T squared. That's in front of the V F T squared. Uh, minus, no, that's a plus. Minus six point five seven five nine M T V F T. That's what's in front of the. Uh, that's what's in front of the this one, that. And then all that's left over here is is minus M B squared V I B squared. Minus M B M T V I T squared plus nine point eight four six seven equals zero. Let's plug this into the calculator. Uh, alpha. I'll have to go down just a second cuz someone, I just buzzed someone in. So I might take another, just a, just like a two minute break, just just to get, just to see something for a second. Uh, but let me just do this first. Alpha, eh, okay. So our coefficient on the A is M B times M T plus M T squared. Okay, so M B. M B is um. Zero point five nine times zero point zero five seven plus. M T squared, right? M T. M T squared, the tennis ball, zero point, zero point zero five seven squared. Okay. That's our coefficient on the X. Now let's see, I mean, on the X squared. On the X is going to be just negative. Um. Six. Six point five seven five nine times zero point zero five seven. That's the mass of the tennis ball. Okay, and last thing. Negative something minus something plus something. That last something is nine point eight four six seven. This one is M B is zero point five nine. Zero point five nine. Five nine. Times zero point zero five seven. Times. V I T squared, and that's uh, four point eighty five. Okay, and the last bracket to fill in. Okay, hold on, sorry, one second, one second, guys, sorry. Someone's knocking on the door. Okay, um, final thing to plug into the thing. Um, is this term right there, M B squared. So the mass of the basketball is zero point five nine. Um, times. V I B squared. So V I B is four point eighty five. Okay, I clicked it. So my two solutions, cuz it's a quadratic, of course, are that V. What am I even looking for? V F T equals six point six meters per second. Or three point five, three point six. Is someone gonna break the news to me if that's correct or not? Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. Oh, we're not, we're not even, we're not even actually at the end of the question, sorry. So, uh, well, I have two answers now, so. How does it even make sense? We have two answers. I don't know. Um. But let's just go with it. Um, so let's say this is the kinetic energy, one half. M V squared equals M G H. So we're looking for that height, right? So Ms cancel. So it's V squared over two G equals the height. So for both of them. So let's try, let's try the both, both of them here. So. Um, I'll just go back to this. So six point six times six point six over two times nine point eight one. So one of my answers is. Is two point two meters and the other answer is going to be. Three point six times three point six is. Zero point six six meters. It was. Not the answer, not the answer. So somewhere, somehow, not just somehow, somewhere, and for sure, I'm something, I made a mistake here. Maybe. Yeah, I don't know. But we have a system. We have a system here, right? We have a this here and this here. So it is solvable. I just don't, I just somehow in the process made a mistake. Not somehow, it keeps as if I, as if it was difficult to make a mistake. Very easily made a mistake. Um. So. Uh, let's just make sure this, this is working. M B. Do we know this? Yes. V I B, yes. M T, yes. The initial, yes. Do we? Oh, oh, yeah. Did this ever go? Not squared? Oh, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Here. Here. This has to be negative. That has to be negative. Either one of these has to be negative of the other one. I didn't do that. Because the initial velocity, it's velocity, right? So the initial velocity of the basketball. Is down, well, sorry, the initial velocity of the. Uh, the basketball is up cuz it just hit the floor. The basketball, the tennis ball is down. So there's somewhere I could have made a mistake, right? There's somewhere I could have missed, made a mistake. I mean, definitely made a mistake. I didn't make one of them negative. I just treated them the same. I treated them the same because I saw all of them were squared, but these two are not squared. They're in a square, but that number will be different. Or will it be different? If I just left it as variables, I don't know, well, we'll. Hmm, yeah. Um. Yeah, is, maybe there's some sort of. Way to. What did I do? I squared that. Yeah, that got rid of that. That's not squared anymore. So I didn't make a mistake there. I I think it's, okay, so that's one place I made a mistake. So the number will change there. This value will be different. Um. Well. What's the vote? Should I do it from the beginning or should I move on? Just move on? Yeah, yeah, so, alright. I'm happy, I I'm happy to, yeah. That's something Horowitz would put on test for sure. Yeah, that's true. He doesn't have a good sense of time, I guess, right? So we'll see. Um. So this question, number nineteen, is you have hired, you have been hired as an expert witness by an attorney for a trial involving a traffic accident. The attorney's client, the plaintiff in the case, was traveling eastbound towards an intersection at thirteen meters per second. As measured just before the accident by a roadside speed meter. As and as seen by a trustworthy witness. As the plaintiff entered the intersection, the car was struck by a northbound driver. The defendant in this case, driving a car with identical mass to the plaint, plaintiffs. Was, period. The vehicle stuck together after the collision and left parallel skid marks at an angle of fifty five degrees north of east. As measured by accident investigators, the defendant is claiming that he was traveling within the thirty five miles per hour speed limit. What advice do you give the attorney? Okay. Um. So a picture would help. So, uh. Eastbound, this guy was traveling eastbound. I should say green. So the defendant. Or the, no, the plaintiff was traveling eastbound. The plaintiff was struck. No, struck by his car by a northbound driver, so going north. Going north. The vehicle stuck together after the collision and left a parallel skid marks at an angle of theta is fifty five degrees north of east. East going north. So from here. They went at a fifty five degree angle like that. Okay. Okay, we know that the the mass is M one equals M two. We know that they're the same. Um, we know that, um, we know V I, sorry, V I one is thirteen. Um. V I one X is thirteen meters per second. I guess I'll call it that. Or no, no, that'll be too confusing. I'll just call it. I'll just call it J hat. So let's say this is the positive direction. So, uh, I hat, sorry, I had. Um, the plaintiff, the yada yada. So we're looking for the speed, V I. Two. Right? We're looking for that. We're looking for the initial speed. Uh. It'll give it to us in meters per second, then we have to switch it to miles per hour, sure. Uh, any other numbers we know? No. Okay, so they're stuck together, so that means kinetic energy is not conserved, but we, but the. Magnitude, I always think, I I see the P, so I think potential, and I always have to very carefully stop myself from saying potential. The momentum is conserved, right? So the momentum initially, M one, I'll just even just call it M. Right? So cuz they're the same. So I'll just say M one equals M two equals M. So M V I one plus M V I two. Equals M two M V F. Two, or V F, just the final velocity of them together. Yeah, okay. So. We don't know. We don't know anything about that. Let me just tell you, make sure I have everything, all the numbers. You've been hired. That's. The northbound driver. Identical mass, this was the eastbound. Vehicle stuck together after collision left parallel, so stuck together after collision, theta's that, north of east. The defendant is claiming, yeah, what advice, so that doesn't really matter. Okay, well, what I'm thinking is we can split this into the X and Y components, okay? Oh, we can split this into X and Y components. Okay, yes. So, uh, X, Y, X, X. Oh, no, sorry. Just, just the X for now, starting with X. Uh, but V I X two, that's zero. Right? Because he's, he's not going in that direction. So it's just M V I one X equals. Two M V F X. And we can cancel an M from both sides. So the final velocity will be half the initial velocity that this guy started with. The final velocity, I mean, so V F in the X direction will be one half V I one X. So that's one half of thirteen, I guess. So six point five meters per second. Uh, J I hat. Okay, that's the final velocity in the X direction. Let's find the final velocity in the Y direction. So the final velocity in the Y direction is going to be. P I Y equals P F Y. So M. V I one Y plus M V I two Y. Equals two M V F Y. Okay, but again, the Y component of the first one's zero. So it's just, and then we can also cancel out Ms. Right? So it's just gonna be V F Y equals one half V I two Y. So, oh, we don't know that, but let's just say it's that, okay? Yeah, we don't know that, we don't know that speed. But we have an equation now that'll help us, so let me just highlight it. So. Can I do? Okay, what I'm thinking is that I can put this into just general, P I equals P F. So it's, it's really M V, what I said, what I said before, V I one plus M. V I two equals M, uh, two M V F. So what do we know about all these things, right? So M. V I, V I one is thirteen I hat, right? Thirteen I hat plus zero J hat, okay? Plus M times zero. I hat plus, uh, V I. Two Y J hat. Equal, well, sorry, cancel Ms again. All the Ms, right? Equals two V F, period. Uh, maybe actually I'll be more specific here. Two times the V F is going to be, uh, we know the X component is six point five. So six point five I hat. Plus. Um, V F Y J hat. Um, well, it's, it doesn't say he was going, he doesn't, he isn't claiming that he was going exactly thirty five. He's claiming he was going below thirty five, within thirty five. Right? So. If he was going. Yeah, okay, that might work too. I think I'm almost here, though, with this one too, so. Cuz I've. Mm-hmm, yeah, yes. Right, and so I, but if this doesn't work, then we'll try that. So, uh, this is just thirteen I hat. Um, plus V I two Y J hat equals thirteen. I hat plus two. Oh. These are different numbers. I thought they're the same variable. I thought this was, this and this were the same. But I can just put that in, never mind. Okay, I thought I was, I thought I was lost. Never mind. I have this equation up here. Um. Plus two V F Y. J hat, yes, J hat. But let's use this right here. V F Y, J, V F Y is one half V I two Y. So I can just write this as thirteen I hat plus V I two Y J hat equals thirteen I hat. So I can just write this as thirteen I hat plus V I two Y J hat equals thirteen I hat. Plus, and since one-half and two here, I can just write V I Y. Yeah, two Y J hat. And they cancel. And thirteen equals thirteen. Okay. So that didn't work. I ended up with thirteen equals thirteen. Um. So maybe let's try the angle thing. Yeah, but it, but it's, yeah, it's one-half and. Okay, yeah. So I'll just erase all this, and let's see what we do, well, we got right underneath. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll just do what, I'll just do what James did, and that looks, that looks like it works, so. Is it okay if I just pretty, like, just do your thing here? The answer, so, okay, so P I X equals P F X, right, so. Momentum's conserved in the X direction, what's P I X, well, it's M one, well, I'll just call it M, so M. V I one. Uh. In the X, in the X direction, which is, it's all, it's its whole velocity, right? Plus M one V I two in the X direction equals two M. Uh, times V F cos theta. But of course, this is zero. Right, and the Ms cancel. So I can have an expression for VF here, yeah, I can write an expression for VF here. Uh, in terms of all these other things, so it's just going to be, um. That's zero, sorry, just to make clear, that's zero, okay, so it's V I one X equals two V F cos theta. So it's just V F equals V I one X over two cos theta. Oh, and you got a different number than me, you got a different ver- value than me. Where'd your, where'd the two go? But. Hold on, you have V I. Well, you should still have a two in the bottom, just the number two. But did you get the right answer, like, from the, from the book, then? But should, like, maybe I'm just, okay, this is, I'll just write what you have, so M. V one I equals. Right? So to rearrange this for VF, this, 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 so it's M one V one I over two. What'd you say? Yeah. But if you got, you got, you got the answer. Oh, I'll have a two on the other one too, as well. There'll be a two on the other one, when, when you get to the last bit, yeah. Okay, so let's, let's erase this. So there's the two here. Um, so there's our expression for VF, let's do another expression for VF in the Y direction, so P I Y equals P F Y. So in the Y direction, we have, so just M one V one I Y. Uh, plus M, I call it M one, just M. Uh, V. Uh, I two Y. Equals two M V F sine theta. Great, so the, uh, the initial V one I Y, that's zero. Right, that's zero, and this just cancels with that. So VF is equal to V I two Y over two sine theta. Well, now we have two expressions for VF here. So V I two Y over two sine theta equals. V I, uh, oh, I wrote numbers backwards. V one I. X. V I, V one I X over two cos theta. Now the twos cancel. Right? So I'm solving for, I'm trying to solve for V I two Y, right, so V I. Two Y equals V. I one X sine theta over cos theta. So V I one Y was thirteen. Thirteen times, uh, tan. Tan of what? Fifty-five. And I'm in. Oh, no, I'm not in radians, I thought I was in radians, did I get a different answer? Yeah. Thir- oh, I did three, not thirteen, that's the difference. So that's equal to eighteen point five seven meters per second, and I'm gonna just trust that you did it right here, forty-one point five miles per hour. Okay, so, yeah, there you go. Okay, so, yeah, just get the thing in, just get the, um. Momentum in the X direction, momentum in the Y direction, break that up, and then you have, uh, an expression for VF. From what you can get, uh, V I Y, V I two Y. Doesn't matter, I keep saying. What'd you say? Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna head out? Alright, 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 take it easy, have a good night. Yeah. So, um, next. Uh, that was, what question, what question was that just now? Don't have it written here, nineteen. So after nineteen, we have twenty, so number twenty. Is here. Wrong question, that. So. Two shuffled, yeah? Sure, yeah, yeah, for sure. So, uh, we're gonna have to ignore this bit here, cause this is me trying it. Um. So, what are we given, we know two cars collide, right, we know two cars collide, they both have the same mass. Uh, one was going just in the positive X direction, one was going just in the positive Y direction, we know the speed of this one. Right, uh, thirteen meters per second. And we know that when they collide, they keep going at an angle of fifty-five degrees. And so pretty much the question was, how fast was this guy going? Okay, so skip all this. Let's break it up into the X and the Y direction, right, the momentum in the X and the Y direction, since it's a perfectly inelastic collision. Well. It, since it's any kind of collision, momentum is conserved, but since it's perfectly inelastic, there's, uh, kinetic energy is not conserved. So we don't, we can't do kinetic energy, but momentum's conserved. So, um, some, someone's got their, rubbing their. Okay, I think that's good now, okay, um, so. We know in the X direction, so it's gonna be M, they both have the same M, right, so M times V I one X, right, the first car in the X direction. Times the X component of the, the momentum of the second car in the X direction, that's zero, because it's just in the Y direction. Equals the combined mass times the final velocity cos theta. Right, cause. That's VF cos theta. Right, um, so simplify a little bit, we can rearrange this for VF, just an expression for VF. The actual speed. Do the same thing in the Y direction. So the Y momentum for the first car is zero, because, right, because, because, I mean, not that, but because it's heading directly in the X direction. The Y component of the speed here. Uh, of the first guy's speed, uh, sorry, the second guy's speed, well, that's what we're looking for, that's like the number we're looking for, that speed right here. And that's equal to, um, the combined mass times VF sine theta, right, because. Someone wants some roadie. I think someone's got their mic on. Someone. Someone's got their mic on asking for some roadie. Okay. Okay, um, so, um. That's VF sine theta, right, so that's the Y component of the collision, so we can again get an expression for VF. We can combine those two expressions, right, combine them to be equal, since they're both equal to VF. Right, and then just solve for V I two Y. The, the, the Y component of the second guy's velocity, which is, which is just the entirety of the velocity, because he's just going in the Y direction. And we solved that to be eighteen point fifty-seven meters per second, which is forty-one point five miles per hour, which means he was going above the speed limit. So did that make sense to whoever asked me for the, for the, uh? Replay? Okay, no problem, no problem. If there's anything that doesn't make sense, just let me know, I can explain differently, or. I don't know. Um, okay, so number twenty. Uh, there is, thankfully, the answer is here for number twenty, so, that's good. Two shuffleboard discs of equal mass, one orange, one other one yellow, are involved in an elastic glancing collision. The yellow disc is initially at rest and is struck by the orange disc moving with a speed of five meters per second.
Ooh, sorry.
Um, after the collision, the orange, orange disc moves along a, moves along a direction that makes an angle of thirty-seven degrees with its initial direction of motion. The velocities of the two discs are perpendicular after the collision. Okay, determine the final speed of each disc, okay, let's, let's, uh, do a little drawing here first, so. Um, yellow disc is initially at rest. The glancing collision, I assume what that means is that it's gonna hit like along the top, and it's just gonna barely hit the top right here. Right, and so that's the, uh, the green? Orange, that's the orange, right, or maybe I'll say. Let's say R for orange, cause oh, it's gonna look like a zero, I don't, or just to say red. So it's going at five meters per second. Afterwards, the final trajectory, this one is gonna be going down. Oh, no, wait, what? Uh, the orange discs moves along a direction that makes an angle of thirty-seven degrees with its initial direction of motion, okay? Uh, so what I assume that means is it, it's going. This way? And this one is gonna be going perpendicular. Right? So not this bottom arrow means nothing. So that's the direction of this. Let's just see if that makes sense, so this is the velocity of the red one, and this is the velocity of the. The yellow one. Okay, I guess I shouldn't use Y for yellow either, because it's gonna be confused with, like, the Y direction, so I'll say red and blue. Okay. So not, one is red. Other one is blue. Blue. Not very important, but it will get confusing if I don't change it, okay. Um, red. Okay, so. It's a perfectly elastic. Well, we assume it's perfectly elastic, it just says elastic, so that means that the kinetic energy is conserved, so let's see this, so K. I equals K F. So what's K I, K I is just, it's the same mass, right, yeah, same mass, so I'll say. Uh, M one equals M two equals M. Okay, so the initial kinetic energy is one-half M, uh, times, uh, I'll just say V I for the red one. V I R. Squared, and so that's equal to one-half M V F R squared. Uh, plus one-half M V F, uh, blue squared. So the halves can cancel out and everything? Yeah? Sorry, energy is conserved, not kinetic, no, there's no potential energy, okay, never mind, so. Um, cause initially, there's just, there's, the blue one doesn't have any kinetic energy yet, that makes sense. So all we know is that V I R squared equals V F R squared plus, uh, V F blue squared. That's an R, should just make that clear. It's an R, okay, so we have one equation, now let's do something with momentum. Uh, do we know any of these numbers, V I R, yes, we know that, we don't know either of these other two. In fact, we're, we're looking for both of these other two. So we need, need another equation, um, I think I'll do it like how we did this last one. Um. No, I can't do it like we did the last one. Okay, let's just give it a try, so I'll say, of course, P I equals P F, but these are vectors. So. Let's just, let's do it in the directions, so P I X equals P F X. Okay, so P I X is M times V I, one, uh, red. Entirely in the X direction already, so that's fine. Um, equals, now what's going in the X direction now, well, both of them, so M times V F R X. Plus M times V F blue X. Let's simplify this, okay, so first of all, Ms can all cancel. So V I R, do I know anything about this, V I R, yeah, we know that number exactly, actually. V F R X, well, that's just equal to V F times, uh, so red cosine thirty-seven, right, so I'll say. Say theta one equals thirty-seven degrees. So, uh, V F, co- V, V F of red cosine thirty-seven. Or I'll just say theta, theta one. Cause I labeled it theta one. Okay, plus V F blue. Um. So it's going at. We can find this angle. Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking, is that gonna be, how's that, thank you for that, is it gonna be? That's forty, wait, oh, yeah, it's fifty-three, nevermind, sorry, I was thinking it was gonna be, it's forty-three now, um. And. So. Just thinking if that's gonna be. Yeah, hold on, actually, wait, no, no. Just checking, yes, it's fifty-three, okay, um, so cosine, yeah, okay, so we can just do V F B. Uh, cosine theta two equals fifty-three degrees. Um. And it's gonna be the cosine of that, right, because we're here, that's the X component, okay, sure, oh, any of them negative, I didn't select a positive, so, that's a positive. Uh, everything's been positive so far though, so that's okay, and so it's cosine of theta two. Okay, we have another equation, let's do our third equation, although, do we need a third equation, let's see, we know, what don't we know? V F R, V F B, of course, V F R, V F B. Um. Yeah, but it also seems like. Yeah, 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 I can solve, you can solve it now, but kinda don't wanna deal with the squares, so I think maybe if I just, if I just do the Y direction too. No, that wouldn't work cuz this, this you can't. The square root of this is not just each thing. Normally, yeah, yeah. So, uh, I'll do this, oh, PFY, sorry. PFY, because I don't really wanna deal with the squares, so here, PY is zero. Right, so the initial Y momentum is zero, and at the end, we just have VF are sine theta one. Plus VF B sine theta two, that's gonna be a lot easier to deal with. Yeah, so let's solve for uh, VF, that's an R. Let's sign, let's solve for VF R first, right, so V. Ah, VF, wow, every letter except the right one, VF R. Equals negative VF B sine theta two over sine theta one. The final. Yes, yes. You're right. This would, the, this won't be negative. So this will be positive, yeah, I knew something didn't make, didn't look right there with that negative sign, there you go. Um, so now I will punch this in, so VFB, oh, never mind, we don't know that, so I will just plug that into. Um. This equation, yeah, I'll plug that into this equation, so bring that down, VF R is right here, so VIR equals. Um. So it's gonna be VF B sine theta two. Cotan theta one, right, because it's a coast theta one over sine theta one, cotan theta one. Minus VF B sine theta two. Sin theta two. Uh, and now I just wanna solve for VFB. Right, so it's just going to be. See if I can do it in one step, VFB equals VIR. Over sine theta two, cotan theta one, minus sine theta two. Let's see if I'm, can do rearranging, so VIR is five. Five, yep. Five over, so sine of. Uh, let me, let me do it neatly, so it doesn't get confused, so something times something. Minus something, so the first one is sine. Theta two, theta two was fifty three. Um, there you go, sine fifty three times, uh, so one over. Tan of. Uh, thirty seven, I'm pretty sure. Okay, nineteen point fourteen. That's what I got for VFB. Nineteen point fourteen meters per second. Kinda fast, isn't it? Yeah, that way too fast. It. Um. I plugged. Right here, this step here, so the, the equation up here is, so it's VF R. Coast theta one, right, but I'm putting this in for VFR. So it's gonna be VF B sine theta two over sine theta one. Coast theta one. But that's the same thing as VF B. Sin theta two times coast theta one over sine theta one, that's cotan theta one. Yeah, yeah. Sometimes it'll be tan, but this time it's cotan, um, that doesn't seem right, does anyone have the, oh, I have the answers here. Um, we're doing number twenty. Yeah. Wait, what, hold on. What? The yellow disc is initially at rest and is struck by the red disc. The blue disc is initially at rest and is struck by the red disc moving with a speed of five meters per second. But in the answer, it says the originally, the. The originally moving object has a speed of four meters per second, the other has a speed of, what, okay, so this must just be. Not the same question they're doing. Let's see in the textbook. Um. The, I'm calling the blue one. The, uh, yeah, the red one, sorry, the red one, yeah. Of five meters, it says in the question, five meters per second. But in the answer, it says it's, well, the answer, you have something weird. Let me look at the answers here, oh, no, it, is there no answers for even numbers? Oh, and odd number problems, yes, there you go, so, yes. That means we won't be able to find this. Um. Am I just completely misunderstanding the question, the velocities of the two discs are perpendicular after the collision to determine the final speed of each disc? And this is what I get in the answer. The number I got was nineteen point fourteen. Right, but the words of, the, the words of the answer are even different, the originally moving object has a speed of. Oh, okay, sorry, then, never mind, I, I, I was reading the answer wrong, okay, yeah, yeah, so it's not weird, never mind. The answer is related to the same question. The other has a speed of three oh one, okay, okay, so yeah, just my answer is completely wrong, that's the problem, um. So. Did I screw up rearranging here? No, I factor out a VFB. Divided that side by sine. Theta two, cotan theta one, minus sine theta two, okay, that makes sense. Okay, I probably typed in wrong. So five over. Something minus something. So sine of fifty three. Times. One over tan of thirty seven. Minus sine of fifty three. I got nineteen point fourteen again. Am I not in? I'm in degrees, I was in degrees this whole time. You did what, sorry, what? Yeah. It shouldn't make a difference, but I'll, I'll try. Coast thirty seven over, I mean, I think it definitely won't make a difference, yeah, nineteen still. You type, you're typing this exact thing in, sine theta two, cotan. No, I know, that's why I checked that already, but I'm checking again now, degrees, I'm in degrees, no. Sin fifty three, that's theta two. Yeah. Cotan. Well, let's just, let me just do the denominator, how about I just do the denominator, denominator is. Oh, okay, let's see where that happened, so here was a sine, here was this, that's where the signs from here. Uh, the sine is for the Y component of the final blue one, so the Y component would be. Uh, fifty three, sine should be right, should be negative, maybe this one's wrong here though, so let's see, no, no, that makes sense too. Um. Uh, yeah, for R. And for, for B as well, for both of them. And then I did the opposite for the other ones. Coast, that's positive, coast, that's positive, sine, that's positive, sine, that's negative. Hmm, looks like it should be right. But of course, you're getting, you're getting the right number, you're getting three something. Uh. For the blue one, yeah, for the not originally moving one. Right? Uh, which is the blue, yeah. Okay, but so you put a, you put a, a coast there instead, let's just see if I get, let's see if me typing, I mean, of course, if, that's the only difference, so. Um. This is. Um, how did I find this, you mean, like, how did I? Yeah, this, I got, well, I solved for the final velocity of the. Uh, this, yeah, I subbed it into the X direction equation, yeah. Which, so that should be, so that should be a cosine theta there, yeah, I just wrote a sine theta for, for no reason. Yeah, never mind. I got too caught up with the cotan here, and I just wrote, why did I write, let's see. The VIR, yeah, that just should be a coast, okay, there we go, I, I was trying to. Yes, coast theta, okay, good, coast theta two. Okay, so then now I should get the right answer, let's just say three. Say three. Uh, meters per second, great, so now we can find the other one, so just from here, so. Um, three times sine of fifty seven over sine of thirties, nope. Of sine of fifty three over sine of thirty seven. So three point nine. VF red equals three point nine eight. Meters per second, that's right, three point nine eight meters per second. Okay, and that's the correct answer for both of them, okay. Uh, right there. Okay, number twenty one. Unless anyone has any questions? Yeah, for sure. So. We know there's two discs. Uh, I guess assuming no friction, uh, everything like that. They have an elastic collision. So one of them is at rest, the blue one's at rest, and then the other one hits it at five meters per second. We know that afterwards, the red one makes a thirty seven degree angle here with its original path. And the other one's perpendicular to it, the path of the other one's perpendicular to it, so ninety degrees. Well, whichever way really, actually, but in this case, it makes sense to be ninety degrees this way. The masses are the same. And that's my positive direction, so. Uh, I find, first I'm gonna, well, first for no, I didn't actually use it, but I. Uh, energy is conserved, so I get this equation, but I don't really wanna use it cuz of the squares. Right, and so I have the option now to just think of the, the uh, momentum, whoops, that's an eraser. The momentum, uh, first in the X direction, right, X direction, and then in the Y direction, and then combine those equations, so. So in the Y, in the X direction. The initial X momentum is mass times the initial. Um. Speed of the red one, that's the only one moving at the start, is the red one, and it's all in the X direction, all in the positive X direction, so it's just that speed. Equals uh, M times the final X component of the velocity for the red one. Right, so this is the velocity for the red one, the X component of that, plus the X component of the final velocity for the blue one. Okay, and what we can do is we can say, well, that's actually equal, VF R is equal to coast, uh, sorry, VF R X, the X component. Is equal to VF R, right, the final velocity of the red one, coast theta, gives you the X component, and similarly. This is gonna be the final velocity, the X component of the final velocity of the blue one. Is gonna be equal to the final velocity coast fifty three, or theta two, call it theta two in this case, but it's fifty three because we know these make, these are parallel. Uh, these are perpendicular, sorry, these are perpendicular. So coast theta two, will be the X component. Uh, and that's okay, that's our equation for now, so we'll move on to the Y component. They're not stuck together, they're, 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 oh, sorry, my picture is just like the moment they're touching, right after this, they go in different directions. Right, so the, right, the moment after this, this one goes out this way, this one goes out this way. It, it tells it. Yeah, so it's just, it's, they don't stick together, it's, yeah, exactly, so uh. Yeah, we can break apart X components, similarly, we go to our Y component, our initial Y momentum is zero, cuz it's only in the X direction. And then we break up the other one in a similar way, we break up the, the, the right side in a similar way, so the final velocity. The, uh, are the red ones final velocity sine theta one, minus the, uh, the blue final velocity, sine theta two. It's minus because this is the negative direction, and that's the positive direction. In the Y. And then we have two equations and. Two unknowns, right, these are VF R, VFB, VF R, VFB, everything else we know, so. Rearrange, sub one into the other, solve for the first one, solve for the second one. Then, good, no problem, yeah, yeah, sounds good, so. Um. Okay, that's that question. Let's go to twenty one, let's just see how many more are left that are actually related to this, so we have twenty one, twenty four. See if twenty four is related, okay, so twenty four is center of mass, so this is actually the last question, twenty one is the. This one here, which, it seems like it's the same question, but with variables, so. Let's see, might not even take that long. So, cuz we don't do center of mass on the test, right? Okay. So two shuffleboard discs of equal mass, one orange and one, the other one yellow, again, well, it doesn't really matter, but I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, just for the sake of being the same. Just call it red and blue. Red. And. Blue, uh, the blue disc. Uh, struck by the red one. Um. Uh, that's all the ones, okay, so it's the same question, but determine the final speed of each disc just in terms of the variables. So, uh, this. And. Uh, well, not quite, so. Um. I can take, so the spinal speed of each variable, of each thing is, that's the final speed of the blue one, the final speed of the red one just needs a little bit more work, so. The final speed of the red one equals, uh, just sub that into this equation. Right, yeah, so that'll just be VF. Uh, no, no, not VF, sorry, cuz I'm replacing that, so it's going to be VIR. Sin theta two over. Sin theta one, sine theta two, cotan theta one, minus sine theta two. So there, that's an expression for VF R. And that's an, uh. The, uh, where are we? And that's an expression for VFB. In terms of things we know, oh, I guess. Yeah, well, I guess you don't call it VIR, you just call it V. Just V. And. That's everything else we know. And I guess theta, you just have to say. Theta one equals theta, theta two equals ninety minus theta. And there you go, now everything's in terms of things we know. Yeah, good. Okay, so that's all the practice, we did all the practice questions. Uh, how long have I been going for? Two and a half hours now, so that didn't take too long to finish that section. Um, I have ten more minutes, so if anyone wants to throw questions at me for ten minutes. Okay. 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 It's the center of mass one, yeah, number twenty-four is the center, center of mass. So you're good to just, just leave it? Yeah, yeah, right, so. Yeah, because I guess they just, they did, they didn't decide what they wanted on the test, so, just halfway through the chapter, that's where they decided to end it. Okay, whoever else had a question, go for it. Hmm, mhm. Yeah. Yeah, I, I know it's, I'm gonna find that exact equation you're talking about, and then I'll explain it, let's see. Uh, it's not on the formula sheet for some reason. It's gonna be. It's not a very, I don't think I've used exactly. Yeah, yeah, I, I, so don't, yeah, exactly, don't, don't worry about too much, because I didn't use it once, I don't think, in my practice. Um, it's more of just like a idea, I just do, I do, just wanna find it, let me just see. What teacher do you have, oh, here, I have, I found it, so, you have Springer, yeah, so. Uh, the equation is delta u equals negative the work done by the conservative force, right? Right, is that what you're talking about? Right, so, um. I think the nega, all, all this is saying is that, okay, so delta, first of all, delta u is really the magnitude, like, well, not really the magnitude, but. They, they are pretty similar things, because delta u is the stuff happening by the conservative force. As you can see in this equation, delta k plus delta u equals work done by non-conservative, right? So that, all the non-conservative stuff is on the outside here, the conservative stuff is here, is, is in the delta u. The negative, all that's saying is that, I, I'm pretty sure, is that it's going out of the system instead of into the system, right, which direction the work is happening in. Right, and so. No. Yeah, 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 you, this is more of, I think, I think a conceptual thing than an actual practical math thing, I think that's what, that's what it is, right? Yeah, okay, no problem, no problem. Uh, I, I think just from D two L, just from, just from, uh, yeah, try to find it, see. Um. Okay, there you go, honestly, I should find my grade twelve physics formula sheet, that was like, much, I, I, I liked it a lot more than this one. Because I just had like more organized stuff, I guess. So I should find that, I have it somewhere, I didn't throw it out. Okay, yeah, sure, chapter six is, yeah, dynamics of circular motion. Okay, let's give it a try. Question seven. Oh, yeah, okay. What was the answer for this, so we, I think I did this one, no, I might not have done this one. Uh, let's see, PCS two eleven, dynamics of circular motion. Uh, where is it? Here, this one, okay, so this is, this is just like from before, just like when I was doing it, and I did it with a few people, um, not like a bunch, not a whole thing, so. I mean, this doesn't seem to really help, but, oh, yeah, actually, nevermind, this does help. So, you're working during a summer break at an amusement park, as an amusement park ride operator. The ride you're controlling consists of a large vertical cylinder that spins about its axis fast enough that any person inside is held up against the wall when the floor drops away. The coefficient of, of static friction between a person of mass m and the wall is mu s, and the radius of the cylinder is r. You are rotating the wa, the ride with an angular speed of omega suggested by your supervisor. Okay, suppose a very heavy person's, person enters the ride, do you need to increase the angular speed so that this person will not slide down the wall? So, let's look at the force diagram, right, force diagram, what's happening here, there's the normal force pushing out against the wall, so this is their, their, their back is here. Their back is here, right, they're, they're facing that way. So, there's the force of friction that's going up, going against the force of gravity, right? The, uh, normal force is just pushing against the wall, right? So, I will call that positive direction, so, let's have a, for the first part, suppose a heavy person. Um. Yeah, what was this, oh, yeah, this is what it was, so, your acceleration in the x-direction, that's what we're worried about. We don't want you to accelerate in the x-direction to fall forward or something like that, right? Um, so, or not your acceler, sorry. Let me get this right, mg over. It's a little messy, so that's why I'm having a little trouble, okay, F N equals ma, just in the x-direction, right, the normal force. F S equals, so the force of friction equals mu times F N, so F N is. Um, the force of, the force of friction over mu, but the force of friction is equal to the mg, right? Because it's going opposite, so the force of friction is mg over mu, so we can put that over here, mg over mu equals ma. And you can see that our acceleration, the m's cancel out, so our acceleration is just equal to g divided by the coefficient of kinetic friction. If that didn't make sense, I'll rewrite it, because it, it was kind of already pre-written, but, that made sense, yeah. So, normal force is, is acting against, like, putting, pushing on something, right? So from the bottom, there would be, there would be a normal force if the floor was still there, but remember, the floor drops out. So their feet are not touching anything anymore when you're on this ride, the floor drops out, and you're just stuck to the wall. So, the only, the, the only thing you're in contact with is the wall behind your back, so the only normal force is forward into, into the circle. Okay, no problem. Yeah. Do you know a page? Okay. Oh, okay, okay, so, um. What was it, sorry, chapter eight, number six? Is that part of the suggested problems? Oh, for you, okay, well, so I didn't do this one, so let's, I don't know, let's see, uh, just to be clear, this is conservation of energy, okay. So, let's, let me make a, may as well just, oh, sorry, you said six or seven? Six, okay. So this is the right one, right, the one that I'm looking at right now, this is, okay. Um, so, let me open this up again, study group here. So. The system shown in this figure consists of a light inextensible, 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 I don't, cord. Light frictionless pulleys and a block, blocks of equal mass, notice that block B is attached to one of the pulleys. The system is initially held at rest so that the blocks are the same height above the ground, the blocks are then released, find the speed of block A. At the moment the vertical separation of the blocks is h. Okay. So. Um. Yeah. Okay, okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. Sure, let's, but let me, let me give it a try first, so we have three segments of the line there, right, L. Each one of those segments, so each one of those segments is one over three L, or just L over three, right? And that always has to be true, that always has to be true, that's, that's an important thing in these pulley questions. So, uh, I'm gonna assume we call this y equals zero, okay? So, the blocks are released, find the speed of block A, so. Well, let's just draw another situation of them separated, right? So, if they had, let's say this one, what do you think is gonna happen, I guess, they're equal mass? They're equal mass, so, I guess this is gonna go down, this is gonna go up? Let's just say that, I, I don't know, so, let's just say that goes down, and this goes up. Right, so this is still equal to this, plus this, plus this, is still equal to L. It's just a different fraction, right, so the, the red equals L. Um, oh, and then here, of course, is, is the block. So, their separation now is h. And I want the speed, well, their speeds are gonna be, fine, no, no, their speeds aren't gonna be the same. Oh, no, their speeds are gonna be the same. Um, wait, are they? Um. Speed of block A. Okay, well, so it's, it's conservation of energy, so it seems like, um, the, what would the potential energy difference be here, if this was? Yeah, I think their speed would be the same, so, here. Delta k, wow, that's not a delta k. Delta k plus delta u equals zero, no non-conservative work happening, so. Uh, that's K F minus K I plus U F minus U I equals zero, so the initial, nothing. Final will have something, the initial of this will also have nothing. Because I'm setting that as zero, so they have no gravitational potential. So, K F equals negative U F. Um, so the final. The final velocity, the same mass, so it's gonna be one-half m v A squared F. Plus one-half m v B F squared equals negative, so the final potential is going to be. I'm gonna go on a limb here and say this is one, uh, this is, uh, h over two, and this is negative h over two. I don't know if that's true, though. So. Yeah. Yeah, I remember stuff with the thing, but I don't, I don't know how to use it, don't know how to use it. Maybe, does, yeah, so someone said they were gonna send me a solution, did someone? Anyone has a solution? Someone asked me something in the chat, let's see if they're still here, though. Yes, someone's still here, someone asked, when do I use delta u, uh, delta k plus delta u equals zero, anytime you have conservation of energy. Um, well, anytime period, you can use delta k plus delta u equals work non-conservative. So, work done by friction, work done by, uh, well. That's the big one, uh, let me think, any other force, really, this is, this is pretty much work done by gravity and springs, you count that in here. And this is, this is, of course, motion, right? Sorry, little, little, little sidetrack there, though, okay, so. Um, I'll probably just look up the question, because I don't know, I, I, I don't have any other answer for you to this one, I'm, I'm not, I can't do the, uh, the pulley ones, I guess. So. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I've seen that before. Is that? Oh, I've, I feel like I've downloaded, look, it's even, it even says one in brackets, that means I had this before, I had this, I downloaded this before, so. Yeah, it even says, uh, I had some problems with this one, the teacher writing this said I had some problems with this one. No, we don't have to worry about anything like this, yeah. Yeah. So, uh, let me go back to OneNote here, so, first of all, is that okay, we leave it at six for this? Is that I just, I'll, I'll send you that document I downloaded, and maybe you can look at that for, right, that's okay? Okay, because I, because I don't know, that's, that, yeah, I'm stumped with that one, okay, but, so for this equation. The equation is delta, okay, delta k plus delta u equals zero. So the full equation is delta k plus delta u equals work non-conservative, right? Um, so, what this is saying is that energy is conserved, right, the change in the kinetic energy. And the change in, in the potential energy, in other words. The change in all the energy is equal to the non-conservative work that happened in the system. Right, so anytime energy is conserved, which is every time that something happens, right? It's especially useful when the non-conservative work is zero, right, it's especially useful then, um. Mm-hmm, elastic collisions, but also inelastic, oh, no, sorry, inelastic energy is not conserved, yeah, energy is not conserved in elastic collisions, momentum is. Um, and so just, just watch out here, this work, work non-conservative, that's gonna be like friction. Uh, and that's the only one I can think of, friction, that's friction will go there, the work done by friction will go in that, in that spot there. Mm-hmm, you're the energy in your system, right? That, because the only way for the energy of a system to change is if outside work happened to it, right, which is non, non-conservative work happened to it. Right? Exactly, friction would be that, no problem. Yeah, it's, it's nine o'clock, me too, no problem. Good luck, good luck, you, I hope, I hope everything goes well for you, hope the test goes well, yeah, I'm done for, I'm done for tonight. What'd you say, say? Not this, no. The integrals are just sort of to get, that's, again, that's like more of a conceptual thing, to know like that the integrals and the rates of change and everything, yeah. Okay, have a good night, good, I'm happy, I'm happy to help. Bye, have a good night, good night, Fatima. Bye, no problem, no problem, have a good night, everybody, good luck tomorrow. That's true, he does, he does like, he does a problem, and he does, he has like a, a slide on problem solving always, like what's, what to do with problem solving. I, I like to just write out the equations, even if I don't think they're that useful, so if I just write out equation out. And just seeing it in front of me, it'll help make the connection of like, what's the next step, right? Even if some of them aren't useful, so that's one tip. Even if some of them aren't useful, so that's one tip. I don't do, I don't do that either, because numbers are easier to misread than a variable, even though these variables are pretty easy to misread, but. You can, you can go back, especially if your handwriting isn't too nice, then it's probably best to leave them as variables until the end, or you'll have more trouble. Yeah, I, I, I didn't do that for this question, and then I got the, uh, got the wrong answer, right? But I had, kinda, I had to, see, like, I had to here, because there's no way I'm gonna square that, right, with three terms in there, like, I could, but. That would be a lot harder than, than not doing that, right? Yeah, exactly. Okay, so, yeah, so that's, that's, that's what I got. Yeah, leave it, leave it in variables and write out every equation that possibly makes sense, one of them will be the right one. Yeah, yeah, I'll post this right, I know, cuz the test tomorrow, so I'll, I'll upload this right away, right away after, so people can see. Okay, no problem, no problem, have a good night. Good luck, good luck. Hope it goes well. Okay, see ya, see ya, have a good night, bye.